Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM. This is the regularly scheduled business meeting of the Sandwich School Committee of May 28th, 2025. We'll begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Danielle Benanda is going to be a couple of minutes late. Her daughter's battling it out on the tennis courts right now. So she sent me a note. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live on Sandwich Community Television livestream on both www.sandwichtv.org and Sandwich Community Television Education Channel 8, and I believe Porter might be recording it. So with that, we'll move on to the first item or the first public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to speak at public forum? Seeing none. Closed public forum. Next up is discussion with the local legislatures. Okay. We'll adapt to it. That's fine. So next up is review and act on the regular business meeting minutes dated 14 May 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular business meeting minutes dated 5/14/25.
Motion by Ms. Goodwin, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 6-0. Next up is review and act on the executive session meeting minutes dated 14 May 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes dated 5/14/25.
Motion by Ms. Goodwin, again seconded by Mr. Fisher, which Lisa likes because she can copy and paste. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0-1. And if I could just get those back. And just a reminder, we've approved the minutes, but they stay confidential until we review for release. Representative Exaros is with us. Senator Fernandez is running a little bit behind, so we'll just, once he arrives, we'll cut you into the agenda. Does that work for you? All right. So we'll try not to get, we'll try to make sure we keep to short things until he arrives. Next up is correspondence and announcements. I just have one, not so much correspondence. There was an article a couple of weeks ago in The Enterprise. It was a meeting of the Commission on Disabilities where they talked about school funding and, or talked about mental health and not a knock on, it was not our reporter that's in the crowd tonight, but there were some inaccuracies in it. I wanted you all to know to reach, I reached out to the editor about it. We were never contacted for comment, the article, and it was said in that meeting specifically, and Joe can correct me if I misstated anything, that we no longer had some mental health programs for students because of lack of ESSR funds. Just for anybody at home, anybody watching, we never used the COVID era ESSR funds for anything like that. We always used it for infrastructure, nothing that was going to be recurring costs.
That's correct. And in fact, in the last three years, the number of staff members that, you know, work in meeting mental health needs of students has actually increased. Just, I can say for the three budgets for which we've all been responsible for, we've increased by at least four FTEs between school psychologists, if you recall from a couple budget cycles ago, plus having additional resource supports at the Forest Dale School through the implementation of the TLC classroom. So, you know, happy to continue the conversation with our friends in the COT.
I did reach out to the chair and say, if you have those, if you're going to be talking about school issues, please reach out to us in advance, and we either have a committee member or staff members appropriate. Make every effort to attend, so. Other one was, traded some emails with the town manager. If you remember in the fall, there was some discussion about doing a comprehensive review or assessment of all the buildings. The estimate for that came in significantly higher than expected, so that has not really moved, but we'll continue to work with the SLUT board and the town manager to try to find a way forward on that. So that's all I got there. Unless there's any questions. Seeing none. Next up, just keeping an eye out. Don't worry, I'm happy to cut off the superintendent at any time, but now, it's now the superintendent's update.
Something I said? All right. I don't have a terribly lengthy report, and it's all good. First off, as we typically do in May, just to put out for public consumption, as we are a school choice district, our number of openings that we have on tap for next school year, as you have in your background notes, at Forest Dale in kindergarten, we will have four openings. In grade one, only one opening, and in grade two, four openings. At the Oak Ridge School, zero in grade three, 10 in grade four, zero in grade five, and 10 in grade six. And then at Sandwich Middle High School, 10 in grade seven, 10 in grade eight, 10 in grade nine, and 10 in grade 10, none in the junior or the senior class. As I know, we will have a lottery, because I think we have a healthy number of applications. Last checked, I think it's something like 130 applications. It tends to go way high for kindergarten, surprise, surprise. But a lot of those transition grades, particularly grade seven, you also see a lot of them. But our lottery will be held Tuesday, June 2nd at 12 noon. We do videotape that. All of this information will be posted to our website. Okay?
Bert?
We only get $5,000 for each kid that we get.
$5,500, but who's counting?
Right, okay. That's $5,500. And you're careful to, I'm sure you're careful to take a look at, to make sure you don't have, you don't wind up hiring another teacher as...
Absolutely, yeah. That's a great question, Bert, because in making the determinations by grade level, you take a look at how many classrooms you have, how big is the cohort of students, average class size and so on. So you have to be very smart and strategic of how you add the numbers of choice students.
What's the cost per pupil now? It's about $18,000, is it?
Easily, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
Is this typical of past years in terms of numbers of openings?
We've, we've had slight increases. My feeling is this, I want to see at a minimum a two to one, and now we're starting, we're more in the ballpark of 2.5 to 1 ratio of students choicing in versus choicing out. If you recall, during the budget cycle, we're in this ballpark of about 135, 136 kids choicing in and about 47, 48 choicing out. That's a healthy balance to have.
And I think it's good news that so many want to come in, the pre, the kindergarten through five and six. I think we've talked about seven through nine in terms of...
Correct.
But once they get here in 11 and 12.
You own them, yeah.
We got them, so that's encouraged.
Well, at any grade, once we take them, we own them, right?
We own them, yeah. And then it has implications for also siblings as well. Once you accept a choice student, their sibling, should they choose to want a choice in, the family, they have sibling preference.
If there's, if there's space.
Correct.
Are you allowed to ask them how many siblings they have?
That is an acceptable question, yes, but it could not be used as a determinant in the lottery. It has to be strictly a blind lottery process.
Any other questions? Just for, Alexandra, the default of every school district is to be school choice. We do an annual vote, it's before the election, where we can, we affirm that we're going to be a school choice district, so. With that, I'm going to cut off the superintendent, because both our state rep and state senators are here. If they'd like to come up and, and join us, real quick, first off, thank you both for coming. Maybe we'll just do some quick introductions. Tell you what, we'll start here. My name's Kevin Searl. I'm the chair of the school committee, and we'll just kind of go down the line.
I'm Danielle Benanda, vice chair of the school committee.
Tracy Goodwin, secretary.
Bart Fisher, just a mere member.
Sue Miller, immediate past chair.
Kayla Adams, member. Alexandra Higgins, member.
Great. I'm Dylan Fernandez, state senator, good to be with you.
If you could grab her mic, make sure the green light's on. Thank you.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
So people, we are being recorded and broadcast on TV. That's why I ask. Thanks.
I'm Stephen Exaros, I'm your state representative. Proud to be here with the senator.
So first off, thank you very much for coming. We've been trying to do this. I know you have busy schedules. I don't know if you're racing back from Boston today or not. I can only imagine the traffic. But thank you for the time. I know there were a couple of different topics that were, we've just, that were shared with you, of areas of concerns for us. I, by no means, I don't know if you want to lead off, or?
No, I'm Joe Maruszek, proud superintendent of the Sandwich Public Schools. Great to see both of you. I just want to lead, you know, I know we were trying to get this through the early April and so on, and schedules as they were. I'm now finishing my 13th year as a superintendent here in the Commonwealth, and I want to recognize and really express my gratitude for the bipartisan support for chapter, the increase in Chapter 70. For many, many years, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, used to the $20 or $30 additional per kid. The fact that there's bipartisan support for us here in Sandwich as a minimum aid district, getting that $150 additional in Chapter 70 per student, just so you know, that represents an additional $324,300. We budget, you know, very conservatively in this district, kind of anticipating very flat or minimal Chapter 70. So realize for this coming school year, something that I think the committee is going to have as a theme, there's a constant reinvestment in our facilities, our facilities and our infrastructure, which is an enormous need. So I want to lead with that, to say thank you. Thank you for your ongoing support, because that is huge to a relatively small district like Sandwich.
And with that, I apologize, I probably should have given you a chance to kind of, I don't know if there's any open comments you want before the committee maybe asks a few questions, so.
Sure. Well, look, it's a pleasure to be in front of you guys. I feel like we were here, we were here, two days ago. So it's good to be back in Sandwich. Look, I think, you know, we, on the Senate side, we just wrapped up our budget, and, you know, now it goes to reconciliation, and then, you know, goes to the governor to sign. Some good news around that front, was able to secure around $36 million in, in kind of earmarks for our region. One big piece was around, one big earmark was, that I filed and got through, was around funding for Pappas Children's Hospital and Rehab Center, which I know that, you know, we on the Capes and send kids to. So that's a really good piece, along with the, also fully fund, got full funding for the Picassett Mental Health Center, the Cape and Islands Mental Health Center, however you want to phrase it, which is another kind of, you know, big win for our region. And I know, you know, they service all people of all ages there, but a little more focused on adults than the, than the children's hospital. So that's, that's good news. We also, you know, we go big for education and the budget after healthcare. It's the thing we fund the most. In Massachusetts, Massachusetts, as you all know, we're the only state in the nation that has education enshrined in our, in our constitution. And so we really kind of put our money where our values are around that. And it's, you know, it's a big chunk, a big chunk of the budget. We fully fund the Student Opportunity Act, which was one of my favorite kind of bills to vote on and support. And then we, of course, do the per pupil piece, which is, which is a big deal. We also had a supplemental budget before this for kind of the fair share amendment dollars, millionaires tax, however you want to, whatever colloquialism you want to use for it. And that puts a lot more money towards, towards education as well. So you'll see in there increased funding for Circuit Breaker. You'll see in there increased funding for the MSBA, School Billing Authority, which, because I know there's, there's some big capital costs around that. You'll see in the Senate budget, you know, school busing is a thing that I've been raising as an issue. It'd be interesting to know how it's impacting Sandwich. Do you guys do it in-house? Or are you contract out?
We contract out.
Contract out, yeah. So, you know, this is a big deal in Plymouth, because it's biggest, bigger than Boston area-wise. I'm sure you guys are having some similar issues, although not to the extent that they are, where there's very few contractors, there's very few people in this space. And so we're seeing a real increase in the cost of busing and how that's impacting school districts, town budgets. So there's a, there's a funded study and, that we just passed on the Senate side. Take a look at how we can encourage more competition in this space, and take a look at, you know, whether there might even be some kind of price gouging going on with some of these companies. So I'm curious, would love to know your thoughts on, on how Sandwich has impacted there. I hear a lot from other places in the district. Got a bunch of kind of local amendments. We, I did do $30,000 coming your way in the sub-budget to the Sandwich Foundation, but it's specifically earmarked for, for education. So, and, and the public schools here, so, you know, if you guys have ideas on, on how to spend that, we can connect you with the, you know, the Sandwich Foundation. And, you know, I guess that's kind of my general comment on, on the state of things. We'll see, you know, the good news is there's, you know, there's kind of headwind, we don't know what's happening with congressional budgets. And of course, if there's massive cuts to Medicaid, that's going to have a huge impact on the state budget. We get around $16 billion from the federal government. A lot of that is healthcare reimbursement, right? So that would have a massive impact on our, on our state's budget. The good news for, for education, though, is that because of the carve-out for the transportation and education, you know, in the, in the millionaires tax, it has to go to those things. It can't go to anything else. Hopefully, it'll be more insulated from other programs in the state if, you know, cuts end up coming because of federal cuts. And unlike, you know, the federal government, Massachusetts, we have to have a balanced budget. We're obligated to. The good news around this too, none of this would be good news, but we do have, I think, per capita, the highest rainy day fund in the country, and it's the highest rainy day fund ever in Massachusetts history. Since I've been in there, it's rose by over 500%. So, you know, there's some, there's some kind of, that could give us a bit of a runway if we, if we hit some kind of choppy period for a little while. So, you know, that's kind of the broad state of affairs, and a little bit of, of kind of what we see in the, on the education space. And then, you know, I'd love to hear more about how we can support you guys. Oh, the last thing I'll mention, we're going to be taking, so this is, you know, like education reform done in the 90s, right? 20-plus years, Student Opportunity Act, which was only like six years ago. We're actually going to be revisiting that. And so there's, I think you're going to see a commission get passed this year around revisiting the Chapter 70 formula. And then probably next year, we'll be taking up the commission recommended, not next year, next session, I should say, taking up the commission's recommendations, or maybe shortly after that. So it's actually been a, in terms of, it's, we're actually revisiting it rather quickly. I think, and it is in my view, and not everyone shares this view, that, you know, Student Opportunity Act's a great thing. Rising tide raises all ships, but it rose, it's risen some ships quite, a lot higher than others, and that's good. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. There are, you know, Gateway Cities have a lot poorer people than, than we have here in Sandwich and other places in the Cape. They'll probably always need a little more funding, right? And more funding. But I think the amount more is, is, is open for discussion and open for debate. And that's debate and discussion I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to having, because I want to see more money coming back to the Sandwiches and Upper Capes and South Shores of the world as well. So it's just a plug to say, and we'll, we'll hear more about what your, what's on your guys' minds, but it's just a plug to say, that conversation's going to be happening. So just keep in touch with me and Jack's here from the team, and, you know, we have the legislative team at the State House, too, about how we can maybe, you know, tweak that to help out Sandwich and get more funding for, for the town. So with that, I'll turn it over to my friend and colleague, Stephen Exaros.
Thank you, Senator. It's great to be here. And I have some prepared remarks to hit some of the key points, I think. And then it'd be great, I think, Mr. Chair to open it up. But I'm proud to be here as your state representative with Senator Fernandez. State budget, school funding, we kind of touched upon that. Right now, the House and the Senate have passed their budgets, but they're different. So they have to go to conference committee, and we'll see how that all comes out. But the good news is both versions have strong increases in the Chapter 78. The Senate proposes $7.3 billion in total education funding and increasing minimum per student aid to $150, which is wonderful. As far as communication, I'm in constant contact with your superintendent, Super Joe, I call him. He's been very good to us. We both go to him for needs, especially before budget season, to see how we can help. It's been tremendous. I'm proud to do that. One of my big concerns is school safety. I was a police officer for 40 years. I was a school resource officer. So I have a bill that I believe the Senator has co-signed and we're working together on, but it's a bill that would increase security at our schools. School resource officer, I'd love to see in every school. I'd love to see the buildings more secure. They call it target hardening, but to make them as secure as we can. Training for the teachers and the staff. And we've been working with Chief Burke. He is a great leader, the fire chief. We've had meetings with a variety of people, police officers, firefighters, citizens, talking about security. One good thing that you have that was, there is a bill pending actually in the State House. You're already there, but there's an actual bill that would make it a law, that school communities should have updated mapping. Because sadly, when tragic incidents happen, whether it's with a firearm or any other weapon, when the first responders respond, they need to know the layout of the building. And when you look back at some of those horrible things that have happened, part of the problem was they weren't sure where to go. So Chief Burke told us that you already have that, which is great. So there's a bill pending that would require it everywhere, but you already have that. So when something happens at your schools, every police officer, every firefighter knows the layout of the school. That's very important. I'm glad that you have that, and I would recommend keep doing that. As far as being in the schools, that's one of my favorite things of being a state rep. It's my fifth year. I love teaching with the eighth graders, civics. I think it's important. I love doing Read Across America. It's so important. I actually read the kids a real-life story that ties together patriotism and service to our country. The field days, the flag day, all those things are so important. And then recently, as the Senator mentioned, we were here for Memorial Day. Sandwich did a beautiful job, a parade, you know, a ceremony here, and then a ceremony at the library. But one of your students, Terry Gallagher, sixth grader, she wrote a beautiful poem about the Pledge of Allegiance, and she won an award for that. So we were able to give her a citation from the State House recognizing that, to be a sixth grader from Oak Ridge School, and be able to do that meant a lot to us. And I would close with, I think as we're going to discuss, my concerns about funding. And as the Senator mentioned, something that may be cut from the federal government, and that affects the state budget. It hasn't really happened, but it's a concern. I just wanted to thank you for being, for asking me to come and let you know I serve on four committees. One is the Ways and Means Committee, which is the committee that decides where the money goes. The Public Safety Committee, which is important, it's kind of my background. But also mental health, and Chair, you spoke about that earlier. Mental health and addiction is part of my life as well. I serve on that committee. And also the emergency management, which tied right into Sandwich recently with the fires at Joint Base Cape Cod. Thankfully, they were able to put it out, but if, if it had gone further, imagine what could have happened. So that's kind of my remarks. I have a copy for, for the secretary if you need it. And then we're here to answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you both for your opening comments. I'll open it to the committee. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I'd love to know yours, honestly. I mean, that's, I think that's, well, one, I'd say, we can get you the numbers, but I believe we reimbursed it at a higher rate in the, you know, in the fiscal year. And I think you saw a bit of a bump up in the supplemental budget around that. But I think that's the purpose of the review commission, is to look at everything. So it's not just that. I mean, there's that piece, right? There's the transportation costs for kids. That is huge. Some of these, especially, you know, really smaller districts, some of the transportation costs to special needs schools is, is quite exorbitant. And so the amount reimbursed around that, I think it's widely viewed, needs to be, needs to be tweaked. You know, I think there's a broad view that, you know, we need to do something around, around school bus reimbursement. You guys aren't regional, so you don't get any reimbursement. So, you know, I think there's a look, there's some thought around that. I mean, but that's the whole purpose of this, right? Is to take a look at it, open it up, see what is working, what's not working, and, you know, which buckets need a little more, a little more support. So look at the formula.
If we could make sure your green light's on, so we can see...
Just to follow up, you heard us talk about school choice. People that choice in reimburse the town $5,500 per student. Students that choice out to charter schools, that... Student that choice out to charter schools, that full per pupil cost goes with them. So even though there's been effort to narrow that gap, I think in the FY '26 budget, it's still planned to be less than it was last year, at least what I read in the Globe. So I appreciate whatever. Got to keep that drum beating.
It's not a level playing field right now.
Yeah, if I could just add, those were great comments, great question. We should be working together on that. You know, the money follows the student, and it's a big issue. But also another one we, I wanted to mention earlier, I don't know if you've thought about it, but a big issue lately is the vocational schools, where there's a push to make a lottery system, where students would, instead of applying and let's say earning their way in, they would just be a lottery. So some people want to see a lottery, some people want to keep it the way it is. That's a hot topic because it'll affect your schools. So we're aware of that, and we're looking at that. And maybe your input on that would be helpful, too.
Mr. Fisher, just make sure your light's on, please.
Got it.
Just for everybody, just so they can, everybody's voice makes it to television and those people watching at home over dinner. Mr. Fisher.
Okay, question for both of you. The, recently, the estate tax was finally bumped up from a million dollars, a million dollars to $2 million, and there was some, some other things that were changed with it. That was negated by the fact of the millionaire's tax. Because what hap, what basically happened with the millionaire's tax is, the concern with the estate tax, it was driving people out of Massachusetts. Because you wouldn't wind up paying a fair amount of money, whilst your heirs would wind up paying a fair amount of money when you died. So now we have the million, now we have the millionaire's tax. And is that dri, is that driving, and I'd be interested how each of you voted on that, is that driving people out of the state? And there was some discussion that I heard that it makes it hard for sports teams to attract people as well, because they're going to, they're going to pay pay in the millionaire's tax. So I'm kind of concerned, I realize a lot of that funding goes to education, but then it also forces people out of the state, out of the state of Massachusetts. So I'd be interested in how each of you voted and what your comments are. Thanks.
You want to go first?
Okay. Great question. I think it should be higher on the first part of the question. And as far as, yes. And then as far as what some people call the millionaire's tax, it's actually called the fair share tax, that is something I voted against. And you have to really read it and look at it and see how it works. The idea is the money should go for education and transportation. That's the idea of it. But it doesn't always. And, you know, politically, that's, that's what happens in the State House. There's earmarks that are added to it. Recently, on the supplemental budget, I voted against that because part of it had $25 million for a parking garage in a city near Boston. That's part of transportation, someone could say, but I thought that, that that wasn't the intent of it. So as far as people leaving Massachusetts, I hope they don't. It's a great state. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of concerns that, the taxes and other issues, but that's part of, I would just, you know, think politics. I'm a Republican, Dylan is a Democrat, but we do the best we can to work together. Sir?
Yes, the estate tax was great, and I filed that bill on the House side. Senator Seer filed it on the Senate side, it was back when I was in the House. And we called it an act to mitigate snowbird relocation, and we doubled the estate tax. And then, most, more importantly, got rid of the cliff effect. And was glad to see that the, the governor picked that up, and we got that, that piece done, which is important. And that had a cliff effect, unlike the millionaire, or the millionaire's tax, which doesn't have a cliff effect. This is on income, on your second million dollars earned. I, of course, voted, voted for it. Any of these conversations we're having, we're not, we couldn't have them if we didn't have the money. So the Student Opportunity Act doesn't exist without the fair share amendment or millionaire's tax. There's just not the money for it. You know, free school meals, that's paid for, which we just did by, by that, by the millionaire's tax. Free community college doesn't exist without the, the millionaire's tax. That's been a huge thing for job reentry and getting middle and low-income kids into a, into a good career on, on Cape Cod. And then any talk of really increased funding just happens because of this, this, this money. And, you know, I'm always going to support money for our public school students. And our schools, we, like, you get what you invest in. And in Massachusetts, we have the number one schools in the nation, and our kids clean sweep every category in math and science and reading and writing in the country. We're number one in everything. Like, we compete with Singapore and Sweden. We don't compete with, you know, Maine and Montana because we invest in our, in our education system. And so I'm always going to support that. And then this, you know, the red herring issue of people leaving the state has turned out to actually be completely, completely false. And not only that, it's actually raising more money than is projected, which shows that maybe even more people of that income bracket are actually coming in. But, you know, whether or not, you know, there's, there's no change in the top income bracket, and because it's raising even more money than projected, you could, you know, maybe, maybe we're getting more, more rich people coming to Massachusetts. The people that are leaving are the people that look like me. If you look at the, the main demographic, it's people in their, you know, late twenties, early four, to early forties. And the main reason that they are leaving is not because millionaires are getting taxed at higher rates, but because the cost of housing and the cost of childcare are more expensive. And by the way, like, our big, our next, you know, we made community college free, which is huge, especially when you think of the, the cost of public education, let alone private higher ed. But the next step for Massachusetts, in my view, is supporting early education and care. We fund that at the highest level ever in, in subsequent years entirely because of this, this funding that we get. That doesn't exist. Didn't exist before this, now it exists. And then eventually, we want this to support early education and care and childcare for, for kids, understanding that, you know, our education system, that, you know, it really doesn't start as young as it should, and kids at an early age. You learn, the, the amount you learn younger is exponentially more than when you're, when you're older. And so we have a real deficit. Other states have, have actually done this quite well. And that's where I think we want to move to, you know, incorporating early education and care into, you know, our K through 12 system in a, in a systematic way that makes sure those kids get the education that they need. And that's really an investment in so many things. Of course, it's investment in kids. It's also investment in families. You know, when you have to pay, it's, Massachusetts is the most expensive state in the nation to send kids to childcare. And when you have to spend $30,000 a year on a kid, for a lot of families, it makes sense for that family member to leave the workforce. That really hurts our economic competitiveness as well. And so, you know, we want more people working. We want families to be able to stay here, especially on the Cape, but really across, across Massachusetts. And, you know, we're not going to be able to do that without, without that funding either.
Ms. Penanda.
May I just add to that real quick?
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Two things that the Senator mentioned that are very important, among others, but I see it every day. One is Cape Cod Community College. I'm a graduate of Cape Cod Community College. I'm proud of that. And make sure people know that, that it's, you know, you can go for free. A lot of people still don't know. It's not really free. We're paying for it as taxpayers. It's millions of dollars, but it's a tremendous advantage. And also the food, the meals, you know, they're free meals, but of course, that's millions of dollars. But it's so important. When I went to the high school, there was a certain night that had all kinds of, like, community events going on. It was really great. But one of the highlights was how the people in charge of the food program, like, came to me and made it a point how special it is, how they've seen, like, lives changed because there's nutritious breakfast and lunch. And here is the town of Sandwich, which we think is, you know, doing well, but it's, it's, people need nutritious food. So it is free, but it costs millions of dollars. That's why we have to be careful when we do our budgeting. Thank you.
Ms. Penanda.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend Senator Fernandez for filing the bill 2659 about establishing a special commission for the mass school building program. I don't know if you know, our, our facilities are aging. Our high school is the same age as I am, 49 years old. Not that I'm saying.
That's.
Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge and Forest.
Reaching better than the high school.
The Oak Ridge and Forest Hills schools are 36 years old. So the commission that's being established for the mass school building program to maybe increase money equitably across districts such as Sandwich, is this a different commission than the one that's revisiting the Chapter 70 money? Okay, so they're two separate commissions. And I know we had, we had a assessment back in February with the mass school building authority?
The survey that's done every about nine or 10 years, yeah.
So they'll be, we'll hear the results in the fall, next fall?
Yeah.
So maybe it's something that we could visit our, our Senator and our representative and discuss the issues that come about from that. We desperately need, you know, increased funds for our infrastructure, in, whether it's in the budget, whether it's a supplemental. I mean, our, there's no new schools happening. We understand that. But we're trying to make do with what we have, and it's just, just not going to last that much longer.
Yeah. Yeah, and, well, thank you. And there's broad recognition that, I mean, like, the cost around this stuff is crazy. And some of the new school costs that you're seeing, I've been seeing other, other, other towns take a look at, quite expensive. So there's broad recognition that, you know, more, more funding needs to, needs to.
And to the districts like Sandwich.
Yeah.
Districts like us.
Exactly.
Worcester has a brand-new high school, Doherty High School. It was $415 million, I think.
Yeah.
We are not going to ask the tax, taxpayers of Sandwich for a $415 million increase.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you. So whatever you can do.
Yeah, great point. If I could just add, I was at that school. It's, it's incredible. But how could a town afford that, right?
No, not at all.
And there is another bill that deals with public safety buildings and town halls. Kind of similar, where we would create a fund where the town of Sandwich could go and ask for help building a new DPW, which you're trying to do, or the town of Born, which is trying to build a fire station. It's too much for small towns, right? You need $50 million to do a fire station, maybe. And what happens, it gets pushed down the line or kicked the can down the road, and then the buildings get worse. And the morale of the employees and the safety, all that. There's, there's fire departments that can't even fit their fire trucks in the building, let's say in Western Mass. So it's a huge issue. And the longer we wait, the prices go higher. So yes, schools, and I would just add, like, public safety and town buildings, we also need to address that, too.
I would echo Ms. Penanda's comments about the building program, and I'll admit, I'm not an expert on it, but a number of years ago, we were trying to go through that program just to replace boilers. And, sorry to traumatize Dr. Miller, because she remembers that. It was, it was essentially going to be double the cost of what we were going to do if we did it on our own because of the management costs that the MSBA required. Again, I'm not an expert in it, but I just remember that it was, it was very cumbersome. So if that commission becomes a reality, I would look at not just equity as far as funding across different communities and not just, you know, building Taj Mahal one place and nothing else anywhere else, but also the structure of how it's managed. And again, I'm not an expert in it, but I'll, so I qualify that. But the, the cost to do it through the MSBA, even though they were going to reimburse us, was going to be, was going to cost the collective taxpayers twice as much. You know, it might have been a blend of our money and the state's money, but it's still taxpayer money.
It's the design and engineering costs, it's the public procurement laws, those types of things. I think it's, the intent is good, but in a community where we're trying to, you know, get the biggest bang for our bucks, it becomes really, really cumbersome. You know, this community in the spring of '22 approved $13 million for some bonds, for some targeted improvements. The lead that probably sold it was playground project at our two elementary schools. And it took a while, but we got there, and we have three beautiful, brand-new playgrounds. But I can also say, you know, about five years ago, I was the co-founder of a charter school in Providence, Rhode Island. And one of my big tasks in getting that building up and running was starting an elementary playground. I can tell you, without some of the onerous requirements, that playground in Providence, which is comparable to one of the playgrounds at one of the elementary schools, was a tiny fraction of the cost because of the red tape and the regs. So I think that's a point to be cognizant of. And I think Daniel's point is right on the money, as far as we know, probably in the foreseeable future, we're not going to have a new school in Sandwich. However, we've got a lot of targeted needs. Think about a high school that was built in 1976 and still has the original science labs in it, okay? Our students deserve more. They deserve better. They deserve to have facilities that are commensurate with the educational needs of today. But I'm sure both of you know some of the sentiments around taxes here in Sandwich. You know, we've got to be, we've got to measure that as well. So any, you know, commission to kind of look at, how does the MSBA address the needs of communities like Sandwich? And again, I, I know for a fact, even here on the Cape, we are not alone with some of these dire facility needs.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And, you know, we definitely need to take a look at it. And I'm happy, if you guys have, you know, we can also get into details on this in a follow-up meeting, too. But my legal, my Senate legal counsel in our office was the director of projects at the MSBA for, for like seven or eight years. So he's really steeped in this stuff. So maybe, I think it'd probably be good to, we'll bring him in on a, on a Zoom, and he's, you know, our legal counsel now, and came from us from the governor's office. And then, you know, previously before the governor's office was at the MSBA. So I think we can actually, you know, we can dig into this quite a bit.
Great. Thank you.
I would just add, it's very competitive. Keep that in mind, right? Upper Cape Tech, I believe, is going to be helped soon, hopefully. They requested millions of dollars. And then there's a school in Yarmouth that's basically falling apart, and I think they may be getting the funds. So there's only so much, and every town, every city is competitive. So I would just say, whenever you're applying, whether it's a boiler or whatever, make sure we know.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because then we can do what we do. We need to know, whenever you make any request or grant application, make sure we know.
That boiler is, about five years ago, was before that $13 million, so. That boiler is about five years ago, was before that 13 million. So it's dated. But I just remember how cumbersome the process.
Yes.
Dr. Miller, I think you had another question?
Two quick follow-ups to a couple of your points. One, so thankful for the continued support of the Innovation, Innovation Pathways Program, which brings that career connection to students in comprehensive schools and as a kind of buffer, if you will, or enhancement to a technical high school education. This is kind of a bridge for students who are probably college-bound, not going into the trades, but hankering for that hands-on, career-based opportunity. So that's really critical. And then to follow up on your childcare issue, you know, we have, we have a grade three through six school, Oak Ridge School. And over the last number of years, the enhancements to after-school programming at very minimal cost to families is the district supplementing and enhancing childcare for young children at this age who cannot be home at school from whenever the bus gets them home to when their folks get home. So as you're looking at creative ways to get around that, if there were some grant opportunities for specific types of programming that would support the learning, but be fun and give students a breadth of opportunities to explore other things. We talk about it as co-curricular, but it's really in those age groups, childcare in my view. So just thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
You mentioned vocational schools. And I was a vocational teacher at Blue Hills Regional, which is in Canton, and Cape Cod Tech. I was there for 21 years. They would definitely, maybe I shouldn't speak for them, but I know we were very concerned about having applicants come in on merit. And the three criteria we got for them was, was attendance, because we wanted kids that would show up, discipline, because we wanted kids that wouldn't cause a problem. And the last criteria was how did they do on grades? So grades was the least, was the least important because we felt once we got them in there, we would, we could motivate them. But if they were undisciplined or they didn't show up in school. So picking kids by lottery almost, excuse me, almost seems insane to pick them by lottery. Whatever happened to the importance of merit in getting in? I don't think most of the, most of the colleges in this state, merit is something, that's an important thing to get in. And as far as a community college being free, I have a tendency to think some, some people, some students that come in there, what they get for free, they may not work as hard. I don't know if there's any, any, any supporting material as far as that is concerned, but that is a concern that I have. Thank you.
On the merit-based, the superintendents of both schools, Upper Cape Tech, Cape Cod Tech, they reach out. They, they like the merit-based idea. But there is a commission or committee to look at all that. Because the reason why some people want lottery is there are waiting lists, especially like in some of the cities. So some people think a lottery-type system would be fairer in a way, but it's a big topic. And I prefer the merit-based. Maybe there's a way to combine both, but that's a big topic right now statewide.
Just on the community college, we've had meetings with Forests recently. And actually, what they've seen is the funding, a lot of kids that go there are quite poor. And so they, prior to this, they're seeing, they're seeing less of a dropout rate as, as the takeaway, because previously, a lot of kids would start and then because of their financial situation, have to stop because it was expensive. And, and, you know, because it's a big op, you know, it's an opportunity cost, quite a large opportunity cost. And so, at least the, from the data side that we've gotten back from the community college is that it's allowing, you know, these marginal students, which is what community college is, you know, kind of designed for. But these kids that are on the margins in the community college who, you know, in the past were, were dropping out or leaving and not being able to finish, this has allowed them to be able to, to finish and then get into a, you know, a more lucrative kind of line of work. And then these are pipelines to work here. So, you know, the biggest program is really like the nursing program, which is obviously huge for us because that's our number one industry on the Cape. And it's growing because our population's not getting any younger here. And then, you know, there's a great airplane engineering program that, that we've both toured recently as well, where kids can get out and make, you know, next to six figures after two years. But that's, so that's, you asked about what they're seeing, but that's, that's the data that we've, we both had a legislative meeting with President Cox maybe a month ago. And that's, that's the data they're seeing.
Free for long, has it, how long has it been free?
Over a year.
Over a year, yeah.
Just to add, President Cox is a big fan of it. So he's always asking us to keep it going. And I'm glad you bring it up again because we want to make sure everybody knows about it. And it's not just kids, right? There are adults that maybe never went to college, and they want to be a nurse now, or a firefighter, or a police officer. Those jobs are hard to fill. There's so many openings, more than in the past. There used to be kind of long lists to try to get in. Those days are gone. So to have a community college on Cape Cod where you can go for free, but it's obviously costs a lot of money from taxpayers, but if it can lead someone, not only a kid like me, when I went there and graduated and became a police officer, but it could be an older adult that is looking for a career, especially one that is badly needed.
Aviation maintenance one is.
Yes.
Fantastic program.
It is. That's in Plymouth. So we wish it was on the Cape, but it is at the Plymouth Airport. And yeah, it's, it's really something.
Any other questions from the committee? See, none. I had a couple, but as usual, Dr. Miller beat me to it and was far more eloquent. So with that, I don't know if you have any, any closing comments? Otherwise, we'll, we'll let you get on and give you the rest of your evening back.
Well, I just want to say thank you guys for having us. I, this is, I'm really glad we're here. And we, this is a really good time to, and, you know, we talked to the superintendent about this, with us, you know, taking up, taking a look at, at chapter 70, revisiting it with, I think it's highly likely we're going to pass this commission to revisit it. This is a much quicker timeline that's happened in the past for this. I think that's a really good sign for some of these, these funding pieces. And of course, the, you know, fair share amendment, fair share amendment piece, bring a lot more money fully funding the Student Opportunity Act and other pieces. I think we should think about how we can use that to better benefit Sandwich. And so, and then we'll, we'll talk about, we'll connect you guys with my, my legislative director and kind of dig into some of the MSBA issues because he's a wealth of knowledge there. But this is, this is great. And let's continue to have an open dialogue. And I really appreciate you guys having us and really appreciate all you do for our students.
Thank you, Senator. I would echo that. This is great. So to have us here like formally is great. But reach out anytime, like Super Joe, the superintendent does. Like email is best for me because it kind of gives a written record. And I can review it at 10 o'clock at night and move it forward. Keep the communication going. There's so many issues, and we've only touched on a few. But those are the big ones, I would think, for schools. And it's so important because our teachers deserve to be paid well, and the buildings need to be safe, and our students need a good environment with proper nutrition and all those things that we talk about. It's the future. And we work together to help our constituents. So we're proud to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both very, very much. We are going to move on with the rest of the agenda. I would, if you have a minute or two to linger, the next up is under the superintendent's update. We're going to talk about some evacuation reunification drills we did from a safety security point. So, so thank you very much.
All right. Back to the fascinating superintendent's report. So my second item, as Kevin alluded to, is last week, last Wednesday and last Friday, we had the opportunity to run the first of our evacuation and reunification drills using Corpus Christi Parish. We started on Wednesday with the Forestale kids. Kind of different than the procedure that we used last year. I, you know, facetiously call it, you know, the DoorDash Uber Eats of reunification in the sense that the parents never left their cars. So what we did is we had a system so that students had, teachers were responsible to give them a number, which stuck on, you know, their shirt. And that corresponded to their family number that will be assigned to them throughout their entire tenure in the Sandwich Public Schools. And we gave placards to families to have on their dash that matched up with the student numbers. As we do with all of the procedures, Central Office is responsible for everything. And keep in mind that the mindset is, in the event of an actual emergency, teachers, school personnel, they're going to be involved with the kids. So therefore, from a training perspective, you want, no matter what the school is, the same set of people doing the work. So I've really got to publicly call out our IT Director, Bryce Harper, who just has this kind of mind for logistics, who really kind of set up this schedule. So you can kind of see, this is from the Forestale drill. Students got off the bus. They assembled in the pews in the church. And then we had a large screen set up at the front, which was the rotation of the numbers as families came in. We had the families queue up in two different lines. And it was more challenging with the Forestale kids because you're talking about five-year-olds and six-year-olds. I'm seeing people, you know, put the kids into their car seats and distract them and so on. So to give you perspective, it took us about 40 minutes to reunify about 128 students. So not bad. We definitely had some bugs in the beginning. Part of it, honestly, and I say this with peace and love, but we do have some overzealous parents when it comes to pickup. We literally had some parents show up an hour before the drill showed up. So as a result, we had to have kids park, parents park, and we had something like two rows of 30 cars. And that kind of messed up the queuing. So some, some flies in the ointment, but it went well. And then on Friday, we did the high school. The kids were terrific, so respectful and reverent and so on. Because we did it in the middle of the day, we had to go strictly with volunteers. We did have 52 parents volunteer to get their kids and then bring them back to the school. It took only 15 minutes to reunify those 52 students. So we got better. And again, like anything, this is probably more about training the adults than actually training the students. But, you know, our philosophy of our District Safety Committee is to consistently move the ball down the field. And I feel like we've done this. As we've said before, this coming Wednesday, June 4th, we will be doing Oak Ridge. It's going to be kind of late morning after the Forestale drop-off. Again, you're more than welcome to come to Corpus Christi and watch the procedure. And I know you were there for the high school one?
Yeah, I would, just a couple of quick comments open it. But if anybody's schedule allows, I would encourage you to go observe. I did, I was bringing a college kid back from his freshman year for Forestale, but I did watch the, the high school, the high school one. It's, as he said, training the staff is invaluable. I did, you know, if, for whatever reason, you know, if this is a gas leak, a fire, or whatever, heaven forbid it's something else, this is the playbook the staff is going to use. You know, a German general once said, no, you know, no plan survives first contact with the enemy. But Eisenhower, I think, was right when he said, plans, plans are useless, but planning is essential. The fact that we are doing this, whatever the event is, if, you know, hopefully it never happens, but is it going to, is it going to go exactly like this? No. But the staff will have this framework to respond and a structure to respond. So I think it's really been invaluable. I will echo compliments to Bryce Harper. Thank you to Corpus Christi Parish for their fantastic support. This is really the best facility in town to do it. It's the biggest one. It has, it has two ingress egresses. We originally looked at the Cal, if anybody remembers, but it's got one entrance. Not going to work. And there's much more parking and everything else. So it's a much, and much more interior space. So it's working very.
Yes.
And the other thing I'd say is, the challenge of the little kids, you know, it requires, you know, you're putting kids in booster seats in some cases. The flip side, on the older kids, they have a lot more agency. So in some cases, the kids were walking down eight, nine cars deep, where maybe the staff, you know, they're going to work, make sure there's actually a positive contact, we match the numbers. In some cases, I'm not going to call out my daughter, but my daughter might have walked down to my wife who was around the bend. I guess I just did. But, so we learned, I think they learned some in both. So.
You weren't there an hour early to pick up your daughter?
No, his wife was. But a couple of people that I do want to call out, as Rep. X said, we have an incredible resource with Chief J.J. Burke. And J.J. has been an invaluable partner to us in the whole planning phase of this. And I also want to recognize Father Schrader, the pastor of Corpus Christi. He and his staff have also been absolutely wonderful and generous in having us for these important drills. So important to recognize those folks as well.
And really the rest of the staff, because, you know, our finance director didn't think probably this, it's probably not in her job description, but guess what? She's all in on doing the tracking. And all the other, Lisa was there, everybody was there pitching in, filling in where, where something needs to get, needed to get done. So.
We need to commend Sandwich for being one of the only districts on the Cape that is doing this type of drills. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So great job.
The last comment I'll make, if you're, for those at the table and those in the audience at home, why'd we do it in the middle of the day? Because we still have the tyranny of the bus schedule. Still have to get the kids to school and still have to get them home. We'd love to do all three schools at the end of the day. It's just the domino effect of how that would impact all the other schools. It's just, it's not possible. So we had to adapt. So even though we couldn't, the, the numbers for the high school were smaller, it's enough of a sample to see if that system works or not. So, any other questions for?
Burke?
One question. The kids in Forest, at Forestale, are they told what's going, what this is all about and what, why it's happening?
In general terms, they're told that, you know, we need to have a drill. I don't think that they necessarily get into the specifics of the what-ifs and so on. You know, over the last two that we've done to Corpus Christi, we, the kids who get picked up in a typical day, get picked up at Corpus Christi. So I think it's kind of portrayed as, oh, you know, we're going to change our dismissal procedures for today and for today only. And this is something that we do so that we're all safe, you know, in Forestale, all students and all teachers and so on.
Kind of think of it in a, to use the emergency management acronym or phrase, it's an all-hazard plan, whether it's, heaven forbid, a threat or. an all-hazard plan, whether it's, heaven forbid, a threat, or it's a gas leak, it's a fire, it's something else. If we have to evacuate a building, this is how we're going to do it, and this is how we're going to reunify. So, think of it in that context.
Okay, and my last item is, I just want to recognize our Assistant Superintendent, Dave Quinn, and the many, many staff members, both at Oak Ridge and at the middle high school that were involved in yesterday's deeper learning expo. We did a couple of showings, one for the students, but then yesterday evening had examples of student work and teacher reflections, and kids very, very organically talking about their work and realized this is part of a two-year grant that Dave authored to do kind of like lesson study, but also a shift in how teachers craft lessons to be, to bring out deeper learning and specifically mastery, identity and creativity of students. So, you know, the, a lot of outstanding student projects were exhibited, some of which were absolutely new to me. You know, for example, one of the fifth grade sections at Oak Ridge, actually, all the kids published their own books. They got hard copies printed. One went for their family, but the rest are being donated, something like 40-something books are being donated to the children's section of the Sandwich Public Library. I mean, that's amazing. And, and talking to those two kiddos that you see in the lower second-hand picture about just the pride that they had, that they actually created something. So, we also had the eighth grade civics projects exhibited, a lot of high school work around the students that I think we had a couple of months ago that won an award for their app that they created. They were there. A group of high school students that did a project around unicellular organisms that are present in the wetlands near the high school and what they learned about that and so on. So, just terrific exhibition of student learning and also just to see students talk about their work and talk about their work with pride. So, hats off to Dave and the team that really was responsible for building this and growing this.
Any questions for superintendent? It was a pretty cool event. I was able to go up last night. One of the projects was actually, I didn't see a name on it, so I can't dime out a kid, but it was a survey about, there was two. One was about, should we give more privileges to high school seniors? I think they wanted to commandeer the teacher's parking lot. I'm not sure how that's going to work. Another one was basically a survey they put out about the cell phones and should seniors have the cell phones back. And I thought was very interesting, and I'll give them points for honesty. One of the questions, and they had little pie charts, was, would you use it responsibly if you had the privilege? I forget the exact percentages, but the percentage that said no versus had yes was actually higher. So, at least they're.
It's like 60%.
At least they were honest. The last thing, I'll make this brief. If you see Carly Smith, ask her about the research she's been doing. Her family got a phone call cold from a gentleman in Germany who found remnants of a B-24 from World War II that her grandfather was on that was shot down. He, he safely parachuted out. Two were lost, six survived. Eventually became a POW in the whole experience, but she has since gone over their research. They actually had the, you know, found metal pieces of the actual plane. She's expanded this into research. She's talking about, you know, I look forward to the day that maybe she comes to us looking to lead a trip to Germany from a, you know, partnering with the high school and the history standpoint. It was, it was, it was humbling and fascinating. So, if you do see her, or next time she comes to talk about Yellowstone, get a sidebar with her. It was really impressive. So.
Excellent.
Anyway, enough of that. Next up is old business. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none. Next up is new business, disposal of SPS nursing equipment.
All right, I changed it on the slide. It technically should be donation. But, we have an interesting piece here. The request is to donate one vision screening machine and one stadiometer. Yes, I had to Google that. A stadiometer, I'm sure you know that, Dr. Miller, is the tool that goes up and down that's used to measure height. Usually it's adjacent to a scale, correct? We would be donating these to the Brazilian Resource Center of Cape Cod and specifically the Bridge Care Program, which services a lot of Brazilian English learners across the Cape and some here in Sandwich. According to Nikki Boardalone, first off, the vision screening machines are no longer used under Mass Department of Public Health regs. They cannot be used. So, we use just strictly the charts, kind of old school. And secondly, we also have several stadiometers. Right now, the new scales that we've purchased as a district that measure weight and BMI have the stadiometers built in. So, according to Nikki, that vision screening machine and one stadiometer could be put to good use through the Bridge Care Program. So, that's the request to donate. Vision screening machine.
That's what we say. Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? My only question was, is there, is any of this equipment, I certainly have no issue with the donation, other than, is, she said it can't be, the Department of Public Health says it can't be used.
Correct.
So, like, the Cal can't use it either? Is there anything that, like, Council on Aging would want or something like that?
Um, my knowledge, no. Yeah. We still would have three. I'm told that we have a grand total of four of them right now.
All right, that's fine. I just want to check. And Dr. Miller sets me straight again. Yep. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven zero. Thank you. Next up, other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none. Next up, here comes the fun. Subcommittee reports, Policy Subcommittee. So, this is the second reading in an approval of the J, K, and L policies. And the, I sent that out, the link to it last Friday. Give you guys some advanced time to kind of look through it. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Ms. Brown has departed, our beloved Chair of this Policy Subcommittee, but Kaylee and I will do our best to answer any questions you might have.
I think everything was pretty clear. You either didn't do anything, did little things, or adopted the MASC, which seemed to be better than what we had. My only question is, I just don't understand the difference between, under JJFR, a student activity agency account and a student activity account. There were two different terms, and I just didn't understand what the difference was. One gave check-writing privileges. I just, I was not, I was not clear on the difference between those two categories.
I'm trying to remember, because there were so many, so off the top of my head. That's why, I think that might just be.
I think that's an error, Sue.
I think it's just an, an errant word.
If you go to the actual policy, it's student activity.
Yep, I'm looking at it now.
I couldn't find a difference. Okay, thank you.
Any other, sorry, I had to scroll to it and try to refresh my brain. Any other questions? Thoughts, concerns, okay?
Just one thing there. So, there is an annual audit.
Yes.
Student activity funds, which shall be conducted in accordance. Okay.
Yeah, that's done along with our regular annual audit.
The principal's nodding in the crowd.
Great. I thought it was.
Any other questions?
And then the policy on internships or student teaching, LDA.
Okay.
Who provides, I guess I'm not clear in the policy. It sounded like the school is supervising, but my experience with student nurses and whatnot is that there's an in-house, I would imagine, supervising teacher that the person works with, but it is the institution of higher learning that actually does the evaluation. So, it's kind of a collaborative piece.
It is.
But, that didn't come through in the policy as written. I mean, we don't have to.
Are you looking at the last line?
Yeah.
I think that's just saying, we're supposed to make sure that there is some type of evaluative method. It's not that we're, we're going to do, do the evaluation, but there's something. Let's just remember.
It's, it's, I just feel that, just given my experience.
Sure.
This sort of thing, that in policy, it clarifies that there's the intern or the student teacher works with a supervising staff person or teacher, but that the evaluation of that student is, comes from the sending institution.
Does that currently happen?
No, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Does that currently happen? If we have a student teacher, I know Genie's here, does their professor or supervisor from their institution come and observe and, into the classroom? I don't know if you could answer that?
They do. They do.
And they're in charge of evaluating and?
Yeah, they, they typically will evaluate, but they will get, based upon their own personal observations, but also with an interview with the cooperating teacher.
With the teacher, okay.
Mentor teacher.
I guess what I'm looking for, without getting into the weeds of process, just a general statement, that it's, it's a, yeah, it's a combined process.
Okay, did you want to?
Not right here, but if we can, pending a minor tweak.
Some clarifying words in addition to that last sentence.
I don't want to hold it up.
What we can do is, if you don't object, we could, because this policy, this policy does not exist right now. We have nothing. We could put it on the list for the Subcommittee to very quickly review and clarify that for you.
Fine. And I would be fine with recommended language coming from Dave and Joe and the building.
If, I mean, if that works for you.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want to hold it up.
Any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Is that just for J?
J, K, and L.
Can I make a motion to approve policies J, K, and L as discussed?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven zero. Correction, the next up, aye actually, we did part of aye, but not all of aye, so we're going to table that for, my claim that the Subcommittee was done was premature, and I apologize for that. So, yep, slacker, I know. Maybe we'll recall Ms. Brown. Next up is Liaison Advisory Committee Reports. The only one I'd mention is from the safety, but we kind of already touched on it. And again, the next one is when?
It will be, I want to say Thursday, June 12th.
Okay, so you've got some time. So, well, I think I am the calendar, I'm, I think Kaylee and I are the calendar people, so I'll just remind you, graduation is June 7th. We're all invited to be there. I'm sure the invite will come out.
Yeah, it already has.
Yep.
Did you RSVP?
I'm sure I RSVP'd. I got a lot of email. Hope everyone can make it. It's a great day. It's good for the soul. If it's sunny, sunscreen, that field is hot. You've heard it here first. So.
Then there was two years.
We had a winter.
One, one year I wore a wool coat.
Yes.
In June, the next year I got a sunburn. So, go figure. Did I get the, you got the minutes back? Thank you.
When does the graduation usually end? Because I have a granddaughter's birthday party.
Showtime is nine. I think it kicks off at 10, right?
Yeah, but wasn't it, is it an end?
It's not an hour, over hour.
Generally, an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
It all depends on how long the-
About 11:30.
Correct.
It all depends how long the principal's speech is, so no pressure.
It's very concise.
So, I should be able to make.
Yes, I'm sure you can. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. Warrants.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants presented.
Motion by Ms. Benand, a second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven zero. Next up is our second public forum of the evening. Wouldn't anybody like to come forward and speak at public forum? Moves a foot, but he does not stand up. We'll move on. Future agenda items. Does anybody have anything for future agenda items? We'll get to Golden Apple in a second. So, the only thing I would mention is maybe for the, Sue, for the finance Subcommittee, you mentioned, I was, I wrote this note actually before you mentioned it, but we talked about the, we had this discussion in the fall, was maybe we, if we can get a meeting and discuss essentially user fees, be it athletics or after-school fees. I think that's something we really need to get on and bring a proposal to the full committee for.
When are we bringing the kids back? You know, remember, they all sat out there and-
The student, School Committee, Student Advisory. I don't know if we will.
I would recommend bringing them back pre-June 11th, because we have two meetings in June, June 11th and June 25th. And I think it's kind of cruel and unusual punishment, call them back on June 25th. They're all underclassmen, so they'll still be here. So, I would recommend tentatively, we'll plan on the pizzas at 5:00 on our next meeting, two weeks from today, and I can set that up.
Is that June 11th?
Yes.
Unless there's a lot of snow days between now and then.
That would be a moot point, because state law, after April 1st, you don't have to make up snow days. So, you learned something.
Show off.
Really?
Show off. Okay. Golden Apple. We're going to do that on the 11th. Anything else you want to, do you need an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, we probably, and I can send out an email or a quick doodle poll, and it doesn't have to be all seven, but, you know, a representative ad hoc committee. We've got a little over 80 applications to go through. Just for you, Alexis, what I do is I kind of do a summary, quantitative and qualitative, where by each school, the person's name, how many votes that they got, and then you'll get, I'll send everything out as one massive PDF form, so you can read through them. And, you know, as we put in the application, it's kind of like what we tell kids when they're writing essay. I'm not going to tell you how long it has to be, but, you know, tell your story and substance counts. So, you know, what I will do tomorrow is I'll send out a doodle poll, who's interested in being part of the ad hoc committee and what date works for you.
We can have three, because if we, we get four, all of a sudden it's a quorum. And, but this is not a sub, an official Subcommittee, it's just a, it's an ad hoc review. So, we're legal there, open meeting law-wise. So, acknowledgements, closing remarks? Nope, nope.
Oh, you thought that was wonderful.
We have a state champion.
We have a state champion.
The Sandwich High School Unified- The Sandwich High School Unified Track Team were the state champs today.
Good show. It was a great day.
The young man on the far right in that picture came in fourth in the javelin, and I think he was about half the height of all the other people on the podium, so.
He came home proudly, coming off the bus, wearing the two medals, one that's a champion. They had the MIAA trophy. It's, it was remarkable. It was great. Great day, up in Natick, Natick High School. Yeah. Thank you.
I want to give a shout out to our friends from Harbor Church. Once again, second straight year, they've got an enormous event called Serve Sunday, where a huge percentage of parishioners do different service projects up and down the Cape. Once again, we got volunteers, I think Kaylee, it was about forty-five of them, adults and kids alike, some of which are our own kids, doing a ton of spruce-up landscaping projects at all three schools. You know, I love showing kind of the before and after, like, probably the worst project of all was at Oak Ridge, that sundial. Cool concept, don't get me wrong, but the backbreaking work to actually go through it and weed it out and so on, so you can kind of see on the right, the before and the after with the mulch. So hats off to Kaylee, her husband, the pastor, Josh Adams, and just terrific people from the church who really get it when it comes to sense of community and sense of service, so I just want to give them a shout out.
Great job.
And as last year, thank you to our own Super Joe for donning a t-shirt and handling almost all of the mulching of the beds, so just if, when you walk by that, admire the handiwork.
People better notice that front island.
They should, they absolutely should. And my kids only asked me if they were done weeding that sundial fourteen times, so I think that's a win.
That's great. Nice.
Speechless, thank you, thank you very much. Dr. Miller?
I just have one thing, and all of our athletes do an incredibly job, incredible job, but I was reading hard copy of the Boston Globe the other day, and what did I see? Globe's top twenty schools, Sandwich Girls Lacrosse was there. That was pretty exciting. I mean, we're a big fish in our small pond, but when you see it in the Globe, you know, that was exciting.
And they're playing tomorrow night, we found out, at home against DY at 6:30, I think, so.
Playoffs begin.
Playoffs begin. The girls tennis won today. Yes, they beat North Middlesex Regional Schools, so they'll be playing, I think, in Newburyport Friday, possibly.
Well, that's an easy commute.
On a Friday. I have.
In and out of Boston.
I just wanted to congratulate, we're not gonna meet again before the class of 2025 graduates, so I wanted to congratulate all of the graduates, their families. They had their last day of classes yesterday and finals have begun, et cetera, but I wanted to commend them. They've faced challenges, they've embraced opportunities, and they've grown so much, so I have no doubt that they are going to succeed in the future, so I just wanted to congratulate all of the class of 2025. Thank you.
Anybody able to top that? Seeing none. Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting to the next business meeting, which will be on June 11th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. But we may.
We'll likely meet at five, yeah. We meet with the students in public session, so.
So we're adjourning to 5:00 p.m.?
Yep. Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you for those at home, and we will see you on June 11th.